Strengthen oversight and demand even greater consequences from mismanagement of public funds. As a committee established under Article 103 of the Constitution and operating under the Standing Order 2293, this public hearing follows due legislative process, the laying of the Auditor General's report before the House and its referral to the Public Accounts Committee for examination. This public hearing provides an opportunity for government entities to clarify their positions and for the committee to interrogate both issues and responses in full view of the Ghanaian people. Our focus is simple: to ensure value for money for every CD parliament authorized for public spending in 2024 and to deepen citizens' confidence in our public financial systems. We invite the public to actively follow proceedings and to provide any relevant information they may have, either through the PAC secretariat or the official email address which will be displayed on the screens as we proceed. Following these settings, we shall submit a report with recommendations to the House. Once adopted, every ministry, department and agency cited will be required to implement the recommendations and report back to the committee within one month. Where necessary, we shall invite the Attorney General and Minister for Justice to take appropriate action to ensure that audit recommendations are not only acknowledged but enforced. I commend the Audit Service, particularly the Auditor General, for the excellent work that they produced in the 2024 audit reports. We are very grateful to you for the service. We know it's not easy with all the challenges, but you were on time in this year and you were able to deliver the reports to Parliament in the stipulated dates. On the stipulated dates. Honorable members will recall that the reports revealed certain things, and I believe that as we meet the ministries, departments and agencies, we will go over all those issues and clarify what needs to be clarified. But one thing remains, that our resolve is firm to safeguard the integrity of Ghana's financial management architecture and reaffirm trust in the institutions that manage our collective resources. As part of Parliament's improvements on transparency and accountability and in line with our new standing orders, specifically Order 2294, members are advised that I will not be presiding over this year's public hearings, having served as a public officer in the 2024 administration. To avoid any perception of conflict of interest and to uphold the heightened scrutiny standards introduced under the revised Standing Order rules, the Rankin member, Honorable Samuel Atamels, will chair these proceedings until we are done with all the 2024 audit reports. I have every confidence that he will discharge his mandate with fairness and fidelity to the national interest. This is a critical national assignment. We count on your support, vigilance and prayers. I thank you all and may God bless our homeland Ghana and make our nation great and strong. Thank you once again. The two honorable members, you kindly introduce yourself and then the Rankin for this sitting will take over. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm Frederick Aheenqua Yaw, MP for Gama North and a member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I now call you Okunno, MP for Eto Sena East, Council 20 Katsoa, a member of the committee. Thank you.
My attention has been drawn to the fact that we have some members of Parliament from Liberia here with us and would like to acknowledge them. Honorable P Mike Jury, if you are here, can we acknowledge you? Thank you for coming. Honorable Joum T Klikia, forgive me for the pronunciation, but Honorable Fode A Fambule, you are welcome. Honorable Ivaké Jones, you are welcome. Honorable Kate O Duncan, you are welcome. And Honorable Johnny Pehei, you are all welcome to our public accounts proceedings. Thank you very much. Honorable Rankin, now Chairperson, please take over.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Now, we have some auditors over here from there. So if you could introduce yourselves, please.
Good morning. My name is Alfred Mirku, Director of the Ghana Audit Service.
Good morning. My name is Michael Addo, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service.
Good morning. My name is Dennis Vomau, Director, Ghana Audit Service. Thank you.
What about the clerks?
Good morning. My name is Michael Martin, the clerk to the committee.
Okay, the first ministry that we are going to call is Ministry of Communications. So, Honorable Deputy Minister, you will join your people and if the clerk will swear those who need to be sworn in, and then you take your seat.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, Honorable Minister, you and your guys could, the ones going to answer the questions could sit down and introduce yourselves. We are taking the head office first. Yes, sir. Could you introduce yourselves, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, my name is Mohammed Adams Sukaro, Member of Parliament for Sisala West and Deputy Minister for Communication, Digital Technology and Innovation. And I am here with my officials from the ministry. I am here to represent my minister who is currently out of jurisdiction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Dr. Mark Oliver Kevor. I'm the acting Director General for the National Information Technology Agency. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Alfred Note.
You can pull the microphone. Yes.
My name is Alfred Note. I'm the Director General Administration of the Ministry.
Good morning. My name is Yabo Du, Director of Nita.
Your infraction that we are looking at from the head office is on paragraph 1468. And Honorable Kusikunedu will handle that with you, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, the infraction is the non-payment of yearly advance. The government of Ghana, through the ministry, entered into a contract with Libara Ghana Limited, who also had a principal contract, transferred all their rights and obligations to Smart InfraCo Limited. And in that, that was for the e-government infrastructure, which started operationalization in 2020. And it required that they pay some advances to the ministry, through the government of Ghana. In 2020, they were required to pay $2 million US dollars. And in 2021, 2022, 2023 and 2024, an amount of $1 million each, totaling an amount of $6 million, none of which have been paid. So the auditors recommended that you do a recovery of this total amount plus interest at a prevailing bank rate. How much of this amount has been recovered?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I will refer to the head of agency, which is Nita, to respond. Thank you.
Since, straight to your answer, for now, none of matters has been recovered. And in terms of action that we have taken since I took over in March 2025, we have written a letter number Nita S I L 250415 on the April 15th, 2025, requesting for all the areas, including this year's obligation. So far, they responded refuting this amount and we referred the matter to the ministry. The ministry agrees with us and they have referred the matter to the Attorney General. Thank you. Do you recognize as Nita the existence of this contract between you and Smart InfraCo? We recognize the existence of the contract between Ministry of Communication, Digital Technology and Smart InfraCo. The contract is not directly between Nita and Smart InfraCo. Thank you, Madam Chair. Aside the letter written, have you had personal engagement? Or the letter only requested them to come or pay? Or did the letter request them to come for an engagement on this matter? Madam Chair, we have engaged them. We have had a joint management meeting between Nita and Smart InfraCo, trying to address this outstanding matter. But we are at a dead end and that is the reason why our mother ministry has taken over. Thank you. Ministry, you said you've taken over the amperes between yourself and Smart InfraCo. What is the status? Aside referring the matter to the Attorney General, what steps as the ministry itself also taking on this matter? Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as a ministry, we referred the matter to AG for advice until we receive advice from AG. As he rightly stated, all other means have been engaged, including having fiscal meetings with them, and nothing has come out of that. And so out of that, that we refer the matter to AG for advice. So we are waiting for the AG to advise us as to which other direction to take. Thank you. When was the referral made to the Attorney General? The entire contract was referred to Attorney General in February.
Thank you very much. I would like for you to tell us the purpose of this contract, why it was entered into, and is it serving the purpose for which we entered into? If you can throw more light on it for all Ghanaians to hear exactly why we went into this contract and what it is doing for us as we speak now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This contract sought to commercialize the extra capacity of the government, e-government infrastructure. The government saw that it has excess capacity apart from what it was serving its ministry, department and agencies, and thought that it could commercialize that excess capacity to increase.
Please help me here. Is this the bit that introduced the smart workplace?
No, Madam Chair.
This is not the bit that introduced the smart workplace?
This is different from the smart workplace, no.
So you are talking about excess capacity. What excess capacity are you talking about?
So.
Please throw more light on it, then we can appreciate where you are coming from, please.
Okay, so government through the Ministry of Communication owns a certain digital infrastructure. For example, we have the National Data Center, we have the LTE sites, we have a fiber boom or fiber network across the country. This is supposed to serve government, e-government needs, but because of the nature of the capacity, it could still serve private sector and other customers. So the idea was to commercialize that extra capacity so that government can get extra revenue or the ministry and Fadama Tanita can also operate with funds. So that was the whole idea. Now, so the contract was entered into between the ministry and the smart, and the Libara originally. So the mother or the parent contract is between the ministry and then Libara. And then subsequently, Libara gave its rise to Smart InfraCo. Smart InfraCo was set up as a special purpose vehicle to drive this or execute this contract. And the ministry also appointed Nita as their implementation agency to oversee their operations. Now, where the controversy is about some addendums after the Smart InfraCo took over, there are at least two addendums to the initial contract. And Smart InfraCo's argument is that these addendums that were entered into by the ministry sought to change these original conditions that they were supposed to pay. And so in fact, the letter I wrote to them on the 15th of April demanding this in an advance, the response they gave was that we should look at the addendums. And from their understanding, the addendums sought to replace the initial advance with some sharing ratio. And that the ministry and Nita also disagrees, and I'm sure that is the reason why the ministry has referred the matter to the Attorney General. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Who is the Chief Director?
Madam Chair, he's indisposed at the moment.
Indisposed? So these people didn't pay anything 2020? We didn't take any action? 2021? No action? 2022? No action? 2023? No action? 2024? No action? Here we are, 2025? And you want to take action?
Chairman, thank you. And Nita, you introduced an addendum, two addendums. Have you had the chance to peruse those addendums? And what are your objectives, understanding of those addendums as to the contention that the company has raised as to the non-payment by rather a sharing ratio of what commercial value may come out from the utilization of the excess capacity? Thanks. From the advice of my legal department and my head of technical services, the addendums do not in any way change the objective of the parent's contract. So it's the reason why, it was on that basis why we wrote to them to meet their obligations. And from February that you sent your letter or your document seeking the advice from the Attorney General, have you followed up from the Attorney General?
Yes, Madam Chair, we, the legal office of the ministry has been doing follow-ups on it.
Has the Attorney General written to you?
Not yet.
So how do they do the follow-ups? And how do you know that the Attorney General is even working on the document?
Well, I can't respond to that.
It means you are not doing anything? No, we are doing something. Even though we are not doing it, we are doing something, Madam Chair. We, the legal department are doing follow-ups. They've written a follow-up letter to the Attorney General and they are here to respond to that. Thank you.
Minister, just to, do you still have existing contracts with Smart InfraCo?
Yes, please. As it stands, we still have an existing contract with Smart InfraCo.
So aside the fiber infrastructure that they're handling, which other contracts do you have with them? Which other existing contracts do you have with them?
So these are not single or separate contracts? It's a bundled contracts? All the e-government infrastructure has been bundled together and given, commercialized to Smart InfraCo?
Maybe we may have to wait for the advice from the Attorney General. Because I, I mean, this whole arrangement, they are sharing agreement with Nita, they feel that they are dealing with, one, the Ministry of Communication and also the Ministry of Finance, sort of. So let's, let's, probably, Madam Chair, we should wait for the advice of the minister on this particular subject. And because it's purely legal, the Attorney General's advice will come in handy on this subject.
Chair, before.
Just a minute. Where is the Chief Director? When you say indisposed, what do you mean? The Chief Director was in office when all these things happened, yet you haul new people who have, who were in there when all these things took place to come and sit before us? And you tell us the Chief Director is indisposed? We would want to see the Chief Director.
Sir, you are on live TV. The question that she asked you, there was no answer. And the answer that I got is so loud. You sit down for five years, you don't do anything. Then you come and sit in front of us. Okay. And Dr. Desal, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have, I see two issues here. One, the Deputy Minister is telling us they have sought advice from the Attorney General, and this was way back in February. Now, we need to establish, how did they seek this advice? Is it by way of writing to the Attorney General? Have they followed up? Can this committee be finished with the copies of that correspondence? That's one. Two, in this particular infraction, the Auditor General actually recommends that the Chief Director takes steps to do the recovery. Now here we are, Chief Director is loudly absent and we are interrogating from officers that appear not to have any information at all. So Chair, I invite you to rule that we have the wrong officers here and that the right officers must be here to respond to this infraction. Thank you.
You heard it loud and clear. It says the Chief Director should collect this amount with interest. And he's indisposed. Chief Director, I know you are watching us. Honorable Minister.
Madam Chair? Okay.
Let them talk. Please let them talk.
Madam Chair, the Chief Director had an accident and hasn't been in office for the past month or so. And when he's not available, we're officers acting instead. And that is why I'm here as the Director General Administration.
Okay, then we'll postpone until he comes back. Because this infraction started in 2020. All the way to 2024, we are talking about $6 million US Donald Trump dollars. And to make matters worse, let's go to the next infraction, which is a paragraph 4721. Honorable Enim will take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This infraction has to do with unsupported payment to Smart InfraCo to the tune of $6,755,175. The auditors noted on 20th of December 2023 that the ministry paid an amount of six, over 6.7 million, wide payments with voucher number two in respect of connectivity platform without the appropriate expenditure supporting documents such as evidence of services rendered or received, certificate of work done and other relevant. certificate of work done and other relevant supporting documents. The recommendation was to the Chief Director again, uh, to recover the amount of six million seven hundred and fifty-five. In your response to the auditors, you indicated that NITA should provide you documentation to this effect. Uh, my first question to NITA will be, where are we in terms of, uh, documentation? And also to the ministry, how much of these amounts has been recovered so far?
Madam Chair. NITA on twenty-second December twenty twenty had submitted a close of project report to the ministry for audit service verification. So that is the documentation that has been provided to the ministry. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, this, this is quite interesting here. The same Smart InfraCo that failed to pay advances from twenty twenty and the ministry then now pays six million without support documents. And this is, this is quite impossible. So, uh, ministry, how much has been recovered to date of this amount?
Honorable Chair, um, respectfully, the six point seven million is different from the six million dollars. Yes.
We are aware, yes.
The six point seven is value added, that is smart workplace value added, uh, project that was done. So that one is different from the commercialization where Smart InfraCo was supposed to pay the six million dollars.
Sir. Uh, sir.
Sir, I think, uh, your response is not satisfactory. Uh, over here, you are dealing with the same company. These are not two different companies. So on one bread, this company owes you. Another bread, you owe this company. What prevents you from even setting off? But then you intend pay without even documentation to this effect. Uh, can, can we get a better explanation of this? Because, uh, your response was NITA should provide documents. According to NITA's boss, the, uh, Director, did you say twenty twenty? Because this refers to twenty twenty-three. That was when the payment was made. And you refer to a document in twenty twenty, which are two different things. We are dealing with twenty twenty-three payments and not twenty twenty.
Yes. So the twenty-second December twenty twenty letter to the ministry had the details of the project. That's why we are referring to that particular letter that had been given to the ministry.
Hello, respectfully, how long have you been at this ministry?
Less than six months.
Less than six months.
But I'm sure-
Where were those people who were there when these things happened? Why? Have all of them have accidents and they haven't shown up?
Madam Chair, as the Director Admin rightly stated, that the Chief Director, who was there at the time all these things took place, uh, was involved in an accident. And, uh, he's not been in office for the past month. And so that is why the Director Admin is here.
But Director Admin-
But just-
How, how long have you been with this ministry?
For six years.
For six years?
Yes, sir.
So you were there when some of these things happened?
Um, well, it's, um, I would say that it's on a need-to-know basis. At that level, you won't see some of these things. It's on the Chief Director Minister level, so.
Um, Director of Administration, I want you to take us through the process of payments in any ministry. Tell us how payments are done. Can you just get up and issue six point seven million to someone without going through the process? Please share with us as Director of Administration, how payments, the processes are done before finally payments are made through Controller and Accountant General to whoever it is. Please share with us.
All right, Madam Chair. So, um, for contract payments, um, depending on the contract arrangements, invoices are generated as and when, um, they are due. Um, memos are put on through the system. And then verification is done whether the project has been done or not. And then based on the reports, payments are made. So basically, that is how it works.
So if that is the process, the Attorney General comes to you, sits with you and the Attorney General says, I need to see the documents supporting this payment. And you just mentioned, it goes through this process, that process goes through GMS and you were not able to show the Attorney General all the documents pertaining to this. Then are you trying to tell us that then you did not go through that process outlined in the Public Financial Management Act?
Ye- yes, Madam Chair, the, I think that the documentation, um, was a challenge. Um, the, as far as I know, the auditors, uh, initiated a process to do a field visit to certify whether the project was actually carried out or not. And I understand that process didn't come on. And so they couldn't verify whether the payment was really made or not.
Um, respectfully-
Yes, Madam.
Um, you had an exit, uh, interview with the auditor, with the auditors. And they told you exactly what the infraction was. The infraction as stated in paragraph one four seventy-two says, um, the ministry paid six point seven million, payment voucher number GOG this to Smart InfraCo in respect of connectivity platform without the appropriate expenditure supporting documents. So you are saying something different from what has been written here. Unless you're trying to tell us that you never bothered to read the Attorney General's report, you are here this morning to say anything and everything that you feel will satisfy the questions we are asking you. Otherwise, you wouldn't have said what you told us. They are saying you did not give them some, um, supportive documents for the payment of six point seven million Ghana cedis. And you just mentioned to us the processes that one goes through before payments are done. So we are asking you, did you go through that process that you just told us or you did not? And if you did not, how did you do it?
Madam Chair, respectfully, all documentations were attached to the PV. But the challenge we had with the auditors at that time was their request to verify, um, uh, from the ground whether really the MDA's received the data that, um, um, they were supposed to get at that time. So, um, back and forth, um, we couldn't really get them onto the fraud. And that was why I think the infraction, we couldn't solve with the auditors.
Um, the auditors are here and the report is also here. When you read the reports, what they are asking of you, they are saying supporting documents such as evidence of service received. Because any time, uh, you receive that service, you have to sign off that you have received this service and then set case of work done. Because you need that to support the payments that you are going to make and other relevant supporting documents. So what you are telling us that they, they wanted to go and see this, it's neither here nor there. You, you read the Auditor General's, uh, uh, report, you read the infraction. They had meetings with you, they had exits, uh, conferences with you and they mentioned all these things.
Mr. Nita, uh, you indicated that, uh, you have cited some document in respect of these payments, which you refer to a twenty twenty document. Uh, auditors, can you confirm if you have cited these documents you referred to?
Honorable Chair, we, we don't have that documentation.
Mr. Nita, uh, who did you submit these documents to?
To the ministry. Letter number NITA-stroke-MOCD-stroke-VAS-stroke-twenty-stroke-twelve-stroke-two-two. Date twenty-second December twenty twenty.
What we are referring to in this infraction has to do with a payment in twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-two has no relevance to this particular infraction. So I think you have to do a good job by telling us what documentation you have provided in respect of this infraction, which is six point seven million. Twenty twenty has nothing to do with this, so it does not come in at all.
Madam Chair, the project was in twenty twenty. From the records I have inherited, the project was in twenty, was, was done in twenty, twenty twenty. Even though the audits-
Honorable Minister.
Was started in twenty twenty. Even though the audit is in twenty twenty-four, that is the information I inherited.
Honorable Minister, we'll flag this one. This is something that the committee will follow all the way to the Attorney General. Read paragraph fourteen seventy-three. We recommended that the Chief Director should recover the total amount, six point seven million Ghana cedis, from the Head of Finance. You are the Head of Finance, right? Sir? Who is the Head of Finance?
The Ministry Head of Finance.
Ministry Head of Finance, where is he?
He's not here.
He too is not here. Should recover from the Head of Finance and same paid into the Auditor General's recovery account at Bank of Ghana, failing which the Chief Director should pay. Did you guys read this report before coming here?
Madam Chair, we did. And I just wanted to throw more light into it. I think when we came, when my minister took over, he went through all these documents. And when he saw the report, it was based on the report and the recommendations. And after his engagement with the company, trying to get them to at least commit or to start payment and nothing like that was done. He referred the entire contract to AG for them to advise him as a minister as to what to, what step to take. And so, as we speak, my minister is waiting for the response from the AG. And so I entirely agree with you and all the recommendations being suggested here. That it is same, you know, um, same, uh, how do I put it? That based on same, I mean, fundings that the minister said that this whole contract, including all these fundings, must be referred to AG for AG to advise. And so as we speak, we are waiting for the AG's response so that the minister can take the next step. Thank you.
Uh, Chairman, at this point, we are in your hands, so.
Thank you. Okay, honorable Edemagun.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Uh, the last time I checked, I was a man.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. Mr. Chairman, going through the audit reports and the responses being provided by the deputy minister, respectfully, we are not convinced, I am not convinced because the deputy minister is asking us to wait for AG's advice. But we are working with the Auditor General's report. And before they came, they read the report. It is clearly stated here that the Chief Director should recover this, this money from the Head of Finance. And so I don't even think that the ministry and the agencies took the committee serious because they would have come with the Head of Finance from the ministry. So respectfully, we need to flag this and get the Chief Director and the Head of Finance to come and answer to the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Chair, I just want to get something, um, right here. I, I think my honorable colleague got me, um-
Honorable Minister.
I did not suggest to the committee that we should wait for the AG's report. I am only updating the committee as to on what the minister-
Honorable Minister, I just want to stop you right there. These things happened started from twenty twenty up to twenty twenty-four. You were not there. There, if you wanted to help, you should have brought the Head of Finance. If I brought the Head of Finance, that would, and the Chief Director, those are the two people that the committee will have to go after. So please, don't incriminate yourself, don't add yourself to a problem when you weren't around. Honorable Dr. Jassal.
Mr. Chair, you would notice if you, if you look at the earlier infraction together with this one, that it is an interesting thing that government is struggling to recover six million dollars from this company. And at the same time, government has paid them over six million Ghana cedis. Six point seven, actually, on this, on this, uh, uh, subject. So the same company, we've paid the same company, that company that we failed to recover six million dollars from. And when you have money, uh, the, 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 the directors attempting to, to justify this and literally calling to question the Auditor General, you read in paragraph fourteen seventy-four that management responded that the ministry has requested for further documentation from the, from NITA, which is the implementation agency from this project. So management is very much aware that these payments were unsupported. And so they have requests, they have agreed with the Auditor General and requested for more information. So to sit here and pretend as if you are not aware of it, I think it's an indictment and an insult to the committee. And therefore, again, respectfully, Chairman, I invite you that the Chief Director is not here. We cannot handle this infrastructure, in, infraction satisfactorily. And that we must give them time within which we need all the relevant officer, officials to be here. Then we can interrogate this infraction properly. I so submit. Thank you.
Chairman, thank you very much. As we conclude on this matter, we also need to actually verify whether due diligence was done on the company. Any due diligence was done on the company? We would like to know because the same company is involved in these two issues. So if value for money was done or due diligence was done to check the background of this company, we would like to know.
I didn't want to talk, but just because, uh, perhaps at a time that you'd be inviting them, some of us will not be there. Just to also avert your minds to find out the kind of methods, procurement method that was used in, uh, engaging this company. It will be very interesting. So as you, uh, interrogate the issues, avert your minds, let's find out how we de- hide the procurement method. I won't be surprised if, uh, they tell us that it was a sole-sourced contract arrangement. So take, take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, Clark, let's flag this one. We will invite the Chief Director, Head, Head of Finance to come and meet this committee. And they need to bring all relevant documents. All relevant documents, that happened at the time of the payment. So, uh, we'll move on on this one. Uh, now let's call cybersecurity, please. Have you introduced yourself, sir? Have you been sworn in?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, introduce yourselves, sir, committee.
Thank you. My name is Divine Selasi Agbeti and I'm the Acting Director General of the Cybersecurity Authority. Thank you.
Your next, your infraction is on paragraph 1475. Honorable Nakoya will take that one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Infraction 1475, Regulation 92 of the Public Financial Management Regulation 2019 states that a principal spending officer of a covered entity shall ensure immediate stoppage of payments of salaries to public servants on their resignation or retirement of an employee. Now, when we move to paragraph 1476, a review of the payroll records of the authority shown that management approved and paid salaries totaling 31,263 CDs to two officers after their resignation dates. The issues here are, who prepares the monthly payroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The monthly payroll at the time was being done by the Controller General Department.
So who also authorizes the monthly payroll?
So validation is done through the Cybersecurity Authority using the electronic salary payment voucher. And so, yes, that's straight to your question.
The audits indicate that the two people officially resigned from the authority. Is that not so?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Can you take the committee through the process of resignation?
Yes, personnel resigns by handing in a resignation to the authority and giving us one month notice. And when the notice is given, then the Controller is also informed, as much as the Ministry is also informed. And from then, the Controller is informed to discontinue any payment to the personnel.
Honorable, honorable member, you may want to find out from him if he has recovered any of this amount.
Yes, Mr. Chair. You are in the process of doing that, sir. So can you finish the committee with their process of resignation?
Yes, we can. We will bring that along if we'll submit it to the committee after here.
So if these two members put in their resignation letter, how come they were paid for the third month?
Mr. Chair, this one looks a bit a gray area because the documentations I have come to meet since I took over in March 2025 shows that the ESPV here showing one of the personnel involved was not approved and it's showing unknown.
Excuse me, is NITA still here? NITA, they shouldn't walk away because they have another question to answer. Let them know they need to come before we send the police to get them. Sorry, let's go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the ESPV record shows unknown. So the person was not approved here. And all the salaries that were approved that month are showing approved here and the ones that are not approved are also showing as to why they shouldn't be approved. And for the person involved, it is showing unknown and I have the record here. And subsequent contact with the person, the person mentioned that she wasn't paid any salaries and we should bring a proof that she has been paid. Initial engagement with Controller also shows that Controller's records are in contrast with the auditor's report based on this one. And the second person, the ESPV is showing discontinual. So from our end, we have done everything administratively possible to disengage any form of payment to the personnel. And the same thing, we engage with Controller. Our initial engagement also shows that the record they have is in contrast with what, with the audit reports. And the person in question is also asking that we should prove that they have been paid because they've not been, they've not received any salaries.
So how long did it take you to notice that salaries were being paid to these two people? Because per section 92 of the Public Financial Management Law, it is a breach. So I want to know how long it took you to know that these two people were being paid. The first person was being paid 24,860 CDs and the second was being paid 6,403. How long did it take you to stop the payments? Thank you.
Thank you. Point of correction, Mr. Chair. The first person was paid a total of not being paid, was paid a total of 6,403. And the second person continually for three months are stated in the audit report, a total of 24,860.
Honorable Member, let's find out from the auditors. Auditors, you heard what is said. What has happened so far?
Yes, Honorable Chair. With the engagements that he's talking about having with Controller and the documentations and the proof that they did not receive salary, all these documentations have not been made available to us to agree or disagree with the position that they are alluding.
Sir, do you have any documentation that they weren't paid?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So what I suggested you finish, you give that information to the auditors.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and then we'll move on. All right, the next infraction is on paragraph 1478, NITA. And Honorable Akusukunedo would take that one.
Chair, cybersecurity. You know, this issue of people resigning from your agency is on the high. I mean, basically because the services that you provide is quite demanding. The market requires a lot of your people, but your salary is still not good. What steps are you taking as a Chief Executive to correct that so that, because we need, we need that skill.
Thank you very much. Even me, my salary is not good. I don't even know how much I'm taking yet. Thank you. Mr. Chair, cybersecurity is a highly demanding profession currently and our staff keep leaving us because once they attain the experience level, normally four, five years, and the certification levels, they don't even stay in the country, they go. I mean, they are needed in United Kingdom, across Europe and Americas. So it's very difficult for us. And those of them who don't get the opportunity to even go outside the country, the private sector is paying them times four, times five, even times eight of the salary we pay them. I've had these discussions with my minister, who is also aware of the market. And we, I've also met with the Select Committee and I pleaded with them to help us, maybe, maybe have some sort of incentives for them to be able to stay. One of the ways we try to keep them in a system is when we pay for a course, then you are bonded. But then for how long can we keep doing that? I think the profession as a whole needs to be looked at as a specialized role and as a country, so we see how best we can maintain this officials in the Cybersecurity Authority. The truth is that everything is cyber right now, even warfare, we don't have conventional warfare. Everything is on systems, so someone can do anything at any time. So we are pleading with yourselves to support the authority in any way to beef up the salary and any form of incentives for the authority. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, with this, once you're on the public sector, it's the public sector that pays you, you are bound to be on the single spine salary structure. So what our advice is that you engage the Minister for Finance and advise. If they can come up with a policy relating to the cybersecurity and the nature of these things now and see how best they can come up with a policy that suits and comes up with a package for people in that area. And I believe that will help. But once you're on the, on the public sector, which it is a single spine salary structure, irrespective of the skills that you hold. So when there are specialized skills like this, you need to come up with specialized policies that will entice people to be in there and also keep them as well. So our advice that you speak to the Minister for Finance and see how best they can support in this regard to maintain and retain the best for our nation.
Well noted, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, you are discharged. Now, NITA, back on the hot seat. Honorable Minister, the NITA guy is still gone? He's around. He's around. Then he needs to be on the hot seat because we are, we are dealing with time.
I, I thought maybe we should flag it too, because it's going to be virtually the same responses. The same Head of Finance issue, the same Chief Director issue. So I will wish that we still step it down and then get them another day to come back.
Yeah, there's a different question, Honorable. Minister, if he's not here, what we'll do, we'll set it, we'll step it down and we'll have to call you another time.
Madam Chair, I've just been informed that he's in the washroom and he's on his way. He's here.
All right, Honorable Akusukunedo.
Mr. Chair, welcome back. Thank you. This infraction has to do with some under recoveries that you needed to have made in respect of the digital gov platform that you were required to receive an amount of 12% of net revenue that is generated from that. But you only paid 7%. But in your responses to the auditors, you indicated that you've written a letter to the Ministry asking for a document that revised your amount from 12% to 7%, which means you agreed to the 7%. Have you received that letter? No, please. So what steps are you taking to recover the 5% difference?
We have written a brief to the Ministry, that's our ministry, to intervene on our behalf.
But the letter that you wrote indicated that there is a change in the decision of the agency's sharing ratio of 12% to 7%. That means you are privy to that because if you write that and that is your response to the auditors.
No, that, this was the, the audit finding that instead of the 12%, 7% was being paid. And the, in fact, there are two contracts. If you come to the agency, there are two contracts. One with the 12% and the other with the 7% signed by the Director General. And we are yet to be convinced that there was actually a formal change from the 12% to the 7%. We haven't received any supporting document yet.
So are you telling me that there are two contracts assisting for one particular contract? Two documents for one particular contract? Yes, please. So which one comes earlier, the 12% or the 7%? Please, both signed on same date. Ah, for, for the same thing.
Yes, please.
Auditors, auditors, did you cite these two documents signed on the same date?
Honorable Chair, we cited only one.
NITA, did you show the two documents to the auditors?
Honorable Chair, yes, there were two documents at that time. My understanding was that the initial 12% was, in fact, we, we were receiving 12% for close to one and a half years. Then later, it changed to 7%.
So it means the documents were not signed on the same date. And do you think two documents can be signed on the same day to different percentages of revenue sharing in that document?
Madam Chair, we can give you the documents. What I have seen, both documents were signed on the same day.
Can we, can we get copies of that, please?
Yes.
Honorable Minister. That should tell you there's something cooking at that ministry. Something really, really serious. So do you have copies of the contracts here?
No, please.
No, okay.
We can get them to you by.
We need you to finish the committee with those two contracts. Because how can you sign two contracts at two different rates the same day?
NITA, is it in your response and the observations of the auditors were that you are now seeking for a document that revised the percentage from 12 to 7? So it meant that you actually did not have the document. Tell what the auditors wrote, unless the auditors are not telling us the truth, which they are. But for you to tell me that you had two documents signed on the same date with different percentages, this cannot be the observations that the auditors had. And if you did have it, you would have given it to them. No, what they are looking for is not the two contracts. No, what they are looking for is not the two contracts. What they are looking for is the fact that there was an earlier response that the two parties had had a meeting and had decided to revise it from 12% to 7%. So we wanted a proof that such a meeting was held, for example, two minutes or any other correspondence, to, to support the fact that there was a formal change or revision of the 12% to the 7%. That is the kind of document is being referred to and that had not been received yet. Have you, did you read the report and the infractions that you were coming to answer to?
Yes, please.
And did you read the portion that stated management's response to the infraction? Yes, please. And what does it say? Paragraph 1481. It says that management responded that the agency has written to the Ministry of Finance and the digital gov via a letter dash of September 27, 2024, requesting for official documents that indicates the decision to change the agency sharing ratio from 12 to 7%. However, the agency is yet to receive a response. And if you have a document, two, that you say you cited, it would obviously tell you that 12% is here and 7%, so what documents are you going to look for again?
Please, if I can read it again. Management responded that the agency had written to the Ministry of Finance and the digital gov via letter number dash of 27 September 2024, requesting for official documents. This is not, we are not talking about the contracts, official documents. The 7% and the 12% is on the surface of the contracts. That is not what we are requesting for. That was signed between Nita and Digital Gov, that is a consortium. But the negotiation that Nita should be giving 12% or 7% was done between Digital Gov, um, Ministry of Finance and the Ministry of Communications. That meeting, the documents that arose from those meetings were the ones that management was looking for to support the fact that indeed there was a revision from 12% to 7%.
Nita, Nita, wait, wait. What is more official than a contract that you signed? The discussions that you have prior to the signing of the contract are not official documents. You are telling us here that you have cited two documents, one is 12, one is 7%. So what official documents are you again requesting for? Meeting notes, minutes?
So that is where the source of controversy as to whether they should pay the 12% or the 7% is arising from. Because if you write a demand notice to Digital Gov that they are paying, um, 7% instead of 12%, they'll show you the 7% contract. The auditors are also looking at a 12% contract. In fact, from briefings from, um, my head of finance, the auditors were shown both the 12% and 7% and they decided to take the 12%.
Uh, Nita, 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 Nita. Director General, let, let me avert your mind on oath. Let me remind you, let me again remind you that you are under oath. Whatever information you are giving this committee will be taken seriously. So let me avert your mind that you are under oath once again.
Yes, Chair.
And then you claim you have two contracts, you are under oath. So you finish this committee with the, both documents.
Yes, please.
Auditors, did you cite two contracts?
No, Honorable Chair, as I indicated earlier on, we cited the one with the 12%. And from my brief, they actually started receiving the, the 12% and then at a point it revised to, um, 7%. So we wanted proof for, for that. We needed documentation to support that and that is what we have not been given as we speak.
Um, Clark, take note of this, uh, issue out here. It's very serious and we'll follow up on it. The next infraction is on, uh, paragraph 1483. And Honorable Nana Osia-Jean.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to let you know that this infraction to the, um, will be about the, the head of finance and the chief director. So I don't know if I, I can still ask my questions.
I'm sorry, this is for the, uh, chief executive officer, no, and head of finance.
Yes, please.
But the chief executive officer is here. But head of finance, that is not here.
Thank you very much. Okay, okay, okay. Director General, clause 148, clause 10 of the Contract of Commercialization of E-Government Infrastructure between the Ministry of Communication and Digitalization and Libera Ghana, signed on 15th August 2018, states that Libera Ghana and Ministry of Communication and Digitalization share gross revenues generated on the gross revenue share ratio as detailed below. Metal fiber, 35%. Tower colocation, 20%. Backbone fiber, 50%. Data center, 35%. LTE, 20%. It was noted that in, in 2021, Smart InfraCo generated a total revenue of 10.1 million Ghana cedis. But they filled remit Nita's portion, totaling 3.8 million Ghana cedis. The auditors recommended that the chief executive officer should ensure that the head of finance, I think he's here, should ensure that the head of finance recovers the total amount of 3.8 million Ghana cedis with interest at the prevailing Bank of Ghana rate from Smart InfraCo and same paid into the auditor general's recovery's account. My first question is, I would like to find out from the head of finance if he has been able to recover this amount to the state.
Madam Chair, the issue relates to the first one that, um, that's the 6 million dollars. Because it's part of the deliverables that Smart InfraCo were supposed to, uh, do. But because of the addendum that was raised or that was signed, um, they came up with, like my Director General said, with, um, excuses that that one too has been erased. So it's part of the discussions that we, we had with them that the addendum does not erase their responsibility of paying revenue to Nita.
Okay, we'll step this one down and then get the, uh, head of finance and then the chief director. And Clark, make sure that the day that they appear, we have the Attorney General also around. And if we can get the officials of, uh, Smart InfraCo also to come, I think that would be great. But if not, Attorney General will know how to get them, because this doesn't smell good. All right, um, Honorable Minister, I think right now, um, we'll discharge you and then we'll call the next group. Thank you very much. The next ministry to call is Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources.
Please go ahead.
Aye. Swear by the Almighty God. That the evidence I shall give before this committee. Touching the matter in issue. Shall be the truth. The whole truth. And nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Okay, Honorable Minister, um, you can introduce yourself and then the officials will come with you.
Madam Chair, my name is Sulemana Yusef, Deputy Minister for Lands and Natural Resources. I'm here with agencies of the ministry that are cited in the 2024 auditors' reports to respond to those infractions that are attributable to us, as the law demands. I want my colleagues at the ministry to introduce themselves.
I am innocent.
Lieutenant Minister, you left out one thing.
Madam Chair, what is it?
A former member, a proud former member who used to torture on this committee.
I, 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 I want to believe that it's not the same way that, um, I interrogate issues that you are going to interrogate me, because I'm at a different position now. Where I sit is different from where you sit. Anyway, we are ready.
I am innocent, Hali Ghan. The acting chief director for the Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources.
All right, your infraction, uh, could be found at paragraph 1962. And Honorable Enim, uh, will, will take care of that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this infraction has to do with non-deduction of rent to the tune of 59,375 Ghana cedis. The auditors noted that six staff, uh, at Abenta Villa failed, uh, to be deducted these rent allowances for some number of months. For some of them, uh, to the tune of 54 months, some eight months and some others seven months. The auditors' recommendation is that the chief director should ensure that the director of finance recovers this amount from these six staff members. What has so far been done?
Honorable Chair, four of the search officers have paid for the rent. We're giving payment plan to two of them and they are paying. We can find you the committee with the information later.
Auditors, can you confirm that four has been recovered?
Yes, Honorable Chair. So we have, um, to the tune of 43,620 that has been recovered so far, with the outstanding amount of 2,741.86. And I must say that the figure was reconciled down to 46 instead of the 59 because per further documents and page slips that were presented, we realized that the figure is supposed to stand as 46,361.86.
Mr. Chief Director, what steps have been taken on the recovery of the two, which now goes down to about 3,000 Ghana cedis?
In fact, we, we give them payment plan and they are still paying.
So in the auditors', uh, recommendation, they also indicated that inputs should be made by the Controller and Accountant General. And what have you done about that recommendation as well?
Honorable Chair, I will need to check up this information and get back to the committee.
This, I'm sure was, this recommendation was given to you a long time ago. And as we said, we are in August and as chief director, you would want to go back. Uh, can, can we know if the director of finance is here present?
Yes, he's here.
So can the director of finance answer this?
Madam Chair, the issue has to do with transfers of public and service surveillance within this period. And so the director of finance, as I spoke to you, took, reported to the ministry last week. So it will be difficult for him to be able to speak to this issue. But what we can see is that But what we can see is that the recommendation by the auditors is strictly being followed. And I have held a meeting with them and telling them that I am privileged to have sat here and so I know what it takes to be able to resolve the matters. And so we are resolving them and we can tell you that you don't have any cause to worry. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, uh, I think that the assurance by the former member of the committee is, uh, no, no more a member, so. Yeah, we will take that, but, uh, next year we'll be back. And I hope, uh, we will not be seeing some of these infractions in your books. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I think we can move on.
Thank you very much. Honorable Minister, how many years were you in this committee?
Madam Chair, I spent only four years on the committee.
Four years is only. All right, the next infraction is on paragraph nineteen sixty-eight. And honorable Duke William Ofereta will take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this infraction is about unreturned official vehicle. A vehicle on the books of the ministry in the asset register was assigned to the board chairman upon a letter written for all vehicles returned. This vehicle is still outstanding. Mister Administrator or Chief Director, could you speak to the status of this vehicle? Whereabouts of this vehicle?
Honorable Chair, we retrieved the vehicle and it's being used by the current board chairman.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the response? You have.
We have retrieved the vehicle.
Auditors, could you confirm that the vehicle has been returned?
Yes, honorable Chair, we can confirm that the vehicle has been retrieved and we have duly inspected it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, your next infraction is on paragraph nineteen seventy-four. And it's an unserved bond, uh, term of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. What has happened to this unserved bond?
Madam Chair, the particular agency does not fall under the Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources. It's rather under the Ministry of Environment, Science and Technology.
Okay, Clark, take note and then I will reassign it to the right one. Okay, that one is, so this one is under local government?
So that's local government.
Okay.
Corrected.
All right, Minister, uh, you are discharged, no more infractions.
We are grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which other ministry is here right now? Um, we are suspending sitting, uh, till two o'clock. And we'll be here two o'clock prompt to continue. Thank you.